I'd like to call the Board of Trustees regular meeting Monday, November 7th, 2016 at 4:00 PM to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of meeting agenda. The additions or deletions, I have a couple of additions. Under new business, Letter G Resolution supporting the City of Richmond's regional assistance to firefighters grant application for an aerial truck. Letter G Resolution supporting the City of Richmond's regional assistance to firefighters grant application for an aerial truck. And also, Letter H, advertisement for senior coordinator. Any other additions or deletions? Senior coordinator. Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Approval of minutes, 10-3, 2016.
If there's no changes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 10-3, 2016.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Trustee Boyd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Public announcements. Any public announcements at this time? Mr. White?
Yes, I'll be very brief. As we know, we have a couple of board members that aren't going to be returning after tonight's meeting. The ambulance authority made up of Richmond last township was able to recognize two of those board members at a regional ambulance authority meeting with just a little plaque and a thank you for their service to the ambulance authority. Our treasurer, Karen Ottenbacher, was unable to be there, so we just wanted to present this to her tonight. It just says, it reads, "On behalf of the staff of Richmond Lenox EMS, in sincere appreciation for your years of leadership and support," Karen Ottenbacher. And then the quote at the bottom is one that I keep actually on my desk that I really liked, and I think it just says it all to keep the meeting moving along. It says, "To know even one life is breathed easier because you have lived this to have succeeded." That's Ralph Waldo Emerson. So Karen, thank you so very much for all of us being here.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any other public announcements? The agenda.
I was just asked on behalf of the staff to present these flowers to Karen and Jody. So, thank you for your service.
Good thing you brought Kleenex, Joe.
Mr. Fuchet.
Karen, Karen, Jody, Chris, on behalf of the entire Lenox Township Fire Department, we're going to definitely miss you. We appreciate all of your support for nearly 30 years for Karen and Karen to the fire department. It's, we are where we are because of the support, the support of every board and every board member, all five of you now and everybody since I've been fire chief. And it's really meant a lot to us and we really appreciate, and we're going to miss all of you. We know you're still going to be living here and still be around, but on behalf of all the men and women at the fire department, thank you very much.
Good evening, Kathy Klein, Police Management of Pantry, Here's Landfill. Recently, I was asked to have a little conversation with the residents in Orion, reminding them about some of the guidelines around recycling. So, one of the things that we used to allow, because it was allowed by the material recovery facility that took recyclables from us that we delivered your recyclables to, they used to allow the clear plastic bags. So residents who had excess recyclables and what would fit in their bins could use clear plastic bags. That has since been disallowed now. The material recovery facility that takes the recyclables is asking, please, no more plastic bags. So residents can acquire a container of their choosing, 35 gallons in size. There are some weight limitations as well, 50 pounds. And they can get a sticker that says recycling from the Lenox Township offices here. Waste management provides those stickers. So they can sticker their container recyclables, and that's the proper way to package those excess recyclables now so that we can eliminate the plastic bags. And we are also working with the township to put together some solid waste and recycling guidelines, and these will be mailed out with the next tax bill. Any other questions?
Questions? Thank you, Kathy. Mr. Safe.
Jody, Karen, Chris, and Karen, just want to thank you guys for being here, for all the support, all those years, 19 years with you guys. It's been my honor and privilege to work with all of you, some for 19 years, some for less, but wish you all luck and appreciate all the support. Good luck.
Other public announcements?
Actually, I'd like to say something. It's kind of a hopefully recruiting thing. 22 years ago, I started service to the township on the fire department. Did that for 10 years, eight years with EMS. During that time, I did the planning commission. I was asked by the board to join the planning commission. Myself and my wife volunteered to start a senior center here, which is still going very strong. We volunteered for a year, eventually became a paid position and still going strong. During this time, I got to know several of the board members, learned a lot, ran for board, went for trustee. My point of all this is, we need more people involved. There's lots of boards out there, well, I shouldn't say lots, there's several boards. There's zoning board, there's planning commission, cable commission, there are ways that residents can become involved with the township. This is your hometown, this is where your tax dollars are spent. I really encourage people to become more involved. Lastly, a huge thank you to Karen and Jody and Karen Churchy. I spent time on the planning commission with her. I learned so much from you guys for all these years. You're the reason that I ran four years ago, because you guys encouraged me and convinced me I could do a good job. What you guys have done for this township for the last 19 or so years is just huge shoes to fill, huge shoes to fill. And I thank you personally and thank you and we have a lot of our residents. That's it.
Thank you.
My turn again. I was going to wait till later, but since we're all talking about it. A lot of you know by now that I'm attempting a write-in campaign tomorrow to try to retain my seat on the board. I feel I still have a lot to give to the township, the residents of Lenox and New Haven. I would like to say that it's been an honor and a privilege to serve my community. Chris, you've been a very productive asset to the township, and I hate to see you not on the board. You gave it your all and then some. Karen and Jody, I've learned a lot from both of you and have enjoyed our friendships and our working relationships. You will both be missed immensely, but just know that good competent people are taking over your positions. I won't say stepping into your shoes because they'll have to earn that, so. They'll do great. I don't know much about the trustees that are becoming in, but hopefully they'll be independent thinkers and do what is right for Lenox Township as a whole. But thank you all for letting me serve all of you.
The other public announcements?
Guess where we're at?
Just go right on.
It's been 28 years, it'll be 28 years in February, that Mrs. Peggy Heinrich told her husband she needed help. He said, "Oh, Karen can do that." At that time, we were open three days a week, and I did my A-bone on the other days, which I'm still doing after 40 years. But it's time to step down, ma'am. Peggy, I appreciate everything you've ever done for me, taught me everything I know. I've had some wonderful people to work with. It is not an easy task, because no matter what you do up here, you can't please all of the people all of the time. You hope that you can please some of the people some of the time. We've always tried to make that decision that it's going to be best for the majority of the people, and I hope we've done that. And again, I agree with Karen, the people that are coming in have jobs ahead of you. Just do what you think is right for the people of Lenox. This is a great place to live, and just because Elvis is leaving the building, he's going to be watching us. Thank you very much.
Well, that's what I wanted to thank, Carol isn't here right now, but I wanted to thank Carol for all the help that she's given me over the years. And just like you, Karen, Peggy taught me everything I know. She came in when I came in, and well, actually, she was the temporary, she was the temporary clerk until I was appointed, and then she said, "I'll stay as long as I think you need me." And six months later, she said, "I'm out of here, find somebody else." So anyway, after 18 years, it's been an honor and a privilege to represent the residents of this township. Neighbors helping neighbors, that's the way I always have felt about it. And like Carolyn said, you do what you think is best. You don't look at the personal side of it, you look at the whole. And so with that, I want to thank the residents of both the village and the township proper. Thank you very much for the last 18 years.
Oh, and there's an election tomorrow.
Any other public announcements? The silence.
I just want to say, it's a shame to see four people leaving all at once. I worked with Jody, I worked with Karen, and I worked with Karen. I never actually worked with Chris. He's done, I think he's done a fantastic job. I want to thank you personally for your service to the township. It takes a lot of energy, a lot of time. I'm really sorry to see all four of you leave at once, it's really sad.
Thank you. Any other public announcements? I have one. I didn't know we were going to do this tonight, and I didn't want to rush you out the door because you still have till the 20th, while you're still in office. So, I kind of felt that it should have took place afterwards and should have been recognized. So I will thank you for your service, appreciate everything you've done. And I think we'll have something afterwards for you also. One other thing too, very important. Myers this weekend has double-double for our food pantry. 10 turns into 20, which turns into 40. So if you're ever thinking about giving to the food pantry, now's the perfect time this weekend because your dollar goes to the fire list doing the double-double coupons. It's for a great, great cause, and it stays right here in our community, through the Lenox New Haven Food Pantry. So, thank you. Any other public announcements at this time? Karen, close that out. Public comment? Any public comments at this time? No public comment. Consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board and will be enacted by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or public soul requests it prior to the meeting in which the chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under item number eight below. Approval of the consent agenda shall be by a majority roll call vote of those present in voting.
The total of the bills to go along with the consent is $345,120.66.
Say it one more time, 345,120.56? 66. Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda to include the bills for $345,120.66.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion? Jeff, put a roll call, please. Or, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Churchy?
Aye.
Ottenbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. There's no unfinished business. New business. Lenox Township Fire Station Phone System Replacement. Chief.
Thank you, Ron. I provided everybody a cover letter as well as some bid specs. Our telephone system is the original phone system, which was installed and built back in 1989. We got one phone that is totally inoperable in apparatus bay, and my phone is probably real close to going next because it's very intermittent. So I went out and obtained three different quotes for replacement of the system, and those are in front of you. One from BCS System out of Sterling Heights for $2,371. One from BSB Communications out of Port Huron, $3,472.27. And then one from High Tech for $7,602.51. This time, I requested a board approval to give me approval to award this bid to BCS Communications Systems out of Sterling Heights for $2,371.
I guess I have a question.
Yes.
So this is going to run off of the Comcast that's there?
Yes. Yes.
Any idea why High Tech is so high?
They wanted to give us everything under the sun, and I tried to explain to them I needed to replace what I have. I didn't need any, any other special features or anything, and they just didn't seem to understand that.
What's the monthly charge that they've been?
Yeah, they were going to charge us $164.95 a month, and that is through who they deal with. Karen, I don't have that.
No, I just kind of blabbered out the difference.
ShoreTel. That was an actual monthly fee that we were going to have to pay to ShoreTel in addition to our monthly fees that I have to pay to, you know, the phone company and the Comcast. And again, they were trying to give us every bell and whistle out there, and I tried to explain that. Had all three people in, all three companies in, and BCS gave us what we wanted, plus they're giving us a $260 trade-in on our old phones.
I like the five-year warranty that the other companies giving us, welcome. The ShoreTel system is what we have here at the township, so what they were quoting them was what we have here. So, that probably is more than what they need down there.
Yeah, it was way more than what we needed to operate down there.
I'll make a motion to allow the fire chief to go with BCS systems for the new telephone system at the cost of $2,371.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Letter B, Emergency Services Complex Concrete Repair.
Also, the same day, on October 28th, I gave you paperwork regarding concrete repair at the emergency services center. Acquired three different quotes, and to begin with, when we approve this, the fire department will pay everything upfront, and then the rest of the bill, it'll actually be divided by 25%. So, General Fund will pay for 25% for DPW. EMS will pay for 25% in next year's budget as well as SMART next year's budget. So, so I acquired three quotes, met with all three representatives face-to-face onsite, and before you, you have your quotes. So at this time, I'm requesting that the board approve me, allow me to award this contract to Bayshore Construction in the amount of $23,191.
Okay, the only thing that, you said the General Fund is paying for the DPW portion?
Yes, or DPW, however it's divided up up here.
Okay, I don't have a problem with any of that, except I know that EMS did not have this in their budget for this year.
Right, that's why I said we're going to cover it, and then after the new fiscal year, Jeff and I had already talked about this, put it in next year's budget.
In motion, so really, I think we can approve, we can approve this, but the actual breakdown of who pays for what needs to be talked about during the next budget year. Just because SMART, there is no separate budget, it's all one budget on the EMS side.
Oh, okay.
So.
But that, just so you know, that is how we've done it, I do believe, two previous times, Jeff? Once?
The last previous time.
I'm just saying, that can be talked about.
Yeah, we'll take care of that later on.
You know, that can be taken care of at a later point, but the DPW would be paying for their own, it wouldn't come under the General Fund.
Okay.
Again, is there a difference in the materials that the different companies are using that causes?
Well, Delta and Bayshore are fairly close when you look at it. You know, there's about a little over $6,000 difference. I guess SAS Services, I don't know what they were making their concrete out of, but it's, well, you see, and it's over twice the amount of the other two companies. So, and I had a hard time getting three companies even to come in and bid, I guess business is that good.
Now, is the concentration or the mixture of the concrete, do they have to look at by?
It's the same. No, they don't have to do that.
I'll make the motion that we allow Lenox Township Fire Department to enter into agreement to the concrete repair of Station One with Bayshore Construction, $23,191, to divide equally by each department and SMART, and the figures will be worked out in the future.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
It'll probably have to be a budget amendment done on the DPW side of the house.
26 Mile Road Sanitary Shore Emergency Repair Oversight Proposal, Mr. Safe.
Yeah, good evening again. This is a proposal from Somad Engineering, their geotechnical engineers. They were recommended to oversight the construction, the rehab operations on 26 Mile Road, and we talked to them about providing some services regarding the bedding of the shore and the method of the construction, and this is outside of our expertise, so we needed a geotechnical engineer, and that's why you see this proposal in front of you today. So this is a supplement to the work that we've been doing on 26 Mile Road.
Do you think this is going to be a one-time thing, or is this something that we're going to have to look at again through this project?
So far, we don't think there's going to be an ongoing thing, but this was done back in October 26th based on a certain scope, and we know that scope has changed slightly. But we wanted to engage them in a contract, and their fee is based on the timing of materials, so whatever time they spend, they're going to take out of this budget. If they exceed that, or reach to about 75, 80% of that, we'll come back to the board for any additional services that we need to. But this is exclusively for that project.
Make a motion that we approve the proposal provided by Somad Engineering in the amount of $4,000.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Mr. Safe.
Thank you.
Nationwide Valick Account Administrator. I don't have anything on that.
Okay, this, I'm just going to read what I had put. As Karen and I want to run the wind down or tenure at Lenox Township, I've been looking at the different accesses that need to be transferred over. The two that come to mind immediately are the 457 compensation plans. Right now, I am the administrator of that. It goes hand-in-hand with the payroll cycle, and so really, Luanne needs to be the administrator of that. So I would like authorization to the signing of the documents for relinquishing my access and adding Luanne as the new township clerk to have the access so that she can continue on from this point forward. Well, actually, from November 20th. Now, with that said, in the next few weeks, I'm putting together a list, there's going to be other things. I would like authorization at this point in time to do the same with those.
I would agree with that upon certification of election results for her, then I would say definitely to do that. Prior to that, I would say, don't do it. Soon as certification comes in, then I think you can.
Oh, no, this is as of the 20th.
Okay.
The paperwork that I got from the two compensation companies, it's as of November 20th. But there's going to be other things I'm going to come across as well.
So you're looking for those that come in the future, you want that in this proposal also, correct? So any financial?
The bank stuff, that's going to be, I'm just, our name will come off, new people will go on, so that's not a big deal. It's the state of Michigan stuff that I have access to, and some of it is transferable, some of it is not. Some of it is specific to me, some of it needs my social security number, and so, of course, I'm going to shut those down. So, that she will have a list for, but there's some, like the deferred comp as an example, that she's going to need immediately because it's part payroll. So yes, I'm asking for this specifically, but more if I come across something in the next few weeks. I should say, what, two weeks?
I'll make a motion that we authorize Jody Keith to sign documents relinquishing her access and adding the new Lenox Township clerk to have this access in any manners that she feels need to be transferred from November 20th on.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. 2017 Holiday Schedule.
Does this include the weeks between Christmas or is this, are we just discussing the actual holidays that we can match with the county?
Did you want that separated, Jeanette?
She can do that.
Come up to the thing, please. I think for the purposes of finding it, she wanted it separated.
In the past, it's been two separate agenda items. One for whether it's gonna be open or closed between Christmas and New Year's. One for the next year's meeting dates.
Can we amend the agenda at this time?
The agenda is the holiday schedule only.
Right.
Really, the next year's meeting schedule still needs to go to planning permission first. So yeah, we can look at the December meeting.
We were given the packet, but it was all one month. We didn't know how you guys wanted it.
Well, it could be presented at the December meeting whether...
Correct.
So if we did, as we've done in the past, we would be closed Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, the 27th, 28th and 29th. I think the majority of the employees either saved vacation time to use during that period or are more than aware that they've used their vacation time up and it would be without pay.
Okay, so we're not looking at the holiday schedule, all the holidays through the county. I'm confused on which one we're doing here. We're supposed to be doing the holiday schedule.
Well, I had asked for the week between Christmas and New Year's. That's what I asked to be put on the agenda. Correct.
That's what I'm asking, okay. Cause the, this, the one from the county is 2016 Holiday Schedule that you gave us with it and that's also...
No, I didn't supply anything but the calendar.
Okay.
Everything else came from the clerk's office. I made this communication.
And we always, we always follow the county's schedule and that's why we're, Christmas is observed on the 26th because it's coming right straight from the county. So there will be a paid holiday for the employees.
And then same thing with New Year's Day, it'll be the Monday, the 2nd.
So I'll make a motion that the township offices be closed for the holidays, December 27th, December 28th and December 29th, that they be added to the holiday schedule. That cover it?
January 2nd. Monday, January 2nd.
That's, that's the holiday anyways. We don't have to approve that because we followed the county, that was approved last year, right? The, the 2nd, January 2nd, that's already a holiday.
That's a holiday.
That's a holiday.
That's observed, yes.
The three days that we need to add to that.
Right.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion?
Will this go out with the tax bills? Will I have to have tax bills go out before that or...
Tax bills go out December 1st and they're going to put on there, as of whatever we decided tonight, they wanna put on there and normally the state has you, the treasurer in her office somewhere that week to collect taxes, but because First State Bank takes our taxes for us, we are not obligated to be open. So, and she wants that posted on the tax bills also or put some kind of message in there so they know they can go there and also post it on the door.
FYI, excuse me, trash collection, those two weeks will be one day late, it'll be Wednesday instead of Tuesday. Thank you.
Okay, so with that said, with the township will be closed Friday, December 23rd through Monday, the 2nd of January.
We need a motion in support, correct? Any other discussion? Not anything? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes. And a side note to that discussion too, snow days will be determined by our emergency services. What we do prior is contact fire, EMS, DPW. They basically tell us whether to shut down or not. Typically, it follows along with the school districts. If all three school districts are shut down or four school districts in our area, we Treasury Department continuing education seminar request.
We have a request from Karen Caltz. There is workshops coming up. I don't know why Michigan Township Association does this, but they're all in the end of November when our tax bills are supposed to go out December 1st. But we're trying to figure it out. Karen's going to go on November 30th. It's the closest, it's in Franken, at the Bavarian Inn. To register, it's $101 for the day and includes her lunch and everything there. Also, she would like the new treasurer's guide, the one, the book that I have is from 2009 here. I think that was 2006. Oh, it's a bunch of years old. So things have changed somewhat, so she'd like to get that and that's $31.50, so the amount she needs approved is $132.50 for a one-day, it's not an overnight or anything that's at Franken. She authorized to use the township car?
I have no idea.
I think we could probably take care of that if she... Yeah, well, we can take care of that.
I was gonna say, we have a...
Plug your driver's records, go ahead.
We have the voter record.
Put it in the motion or just no? And she uses a township vehicle, probably should be, November 30th.
I'll make a motion, township to send Karen Caltz to the MTA workshop and, what do we say, November 30th, the Bavarian Inn, with her to use the township vehicle to get there and approve the cost of $132.50.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any questions or discussion? Just get what you got, get that paperwork on that too. If something, do you feel comfortable taking it? You can also take your own vehicle if it, I have no problem with that either way, so. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes. Letter G. Resolution supporting the city of Richmond's regional assistance to firefighters, grant application for aerial truck.
The chief from Richmond contacted me approximately a month ago, the federal safer, not safer grant, but assistance firefighter grant, application period started at the beginning of the month and ends on November 18th. And he had requested that I provide some assistance in doing the grant because I've done so many for our, for our community. And at our chief's meeting last week, he said that the city manager was requesting that possibly we pass a resolution of full support. And I said, well, send the information and he did. City manager John Morrison had emailed to run it myself with the resolution attached. Well, this is board notes, I, Marty and I were in Pennsylvania Thursday and Friday, so I got that and opened the document up today. The only, the only thing I added to it was today's date and round Jody's names. And it's just showing support because if we do have mutual aid, especially at the North End and we're in need of an aerial apparatus, the way our alarm guards are set up, Richmond would be the one bringing the aerial. We have used, in fact, after the first impression farm fire, they brought the aerial out the second, the next day so I could do myself and the evidence techs could do overhead photos of the fire scene, so. So I'm requesting that you approve the resolution. Steve, I did provide you a copy of it. It's standard, standard language, they're sending it to all the area fire departments in Macomb as well as in St. Clair County. So it's, it's just more, it's kinda like when I go to the congresspeople and ask for their support and send letters of support to support our grant, which I did this, again this year. It's the same thing, it's just more support and, you know, hopefully they can get, this truck's a 1982 aerial, so. Any questions?
Attorney Joffrey.
No, I really have nothing to add. I did take a look at the resolution, it mentioned support and I'm taking that to mean non-monetary.
Non-monetary whatsoever. It's just, we're, we're supporting their, their grant application, especially since it's going to be used regionally in this whole entire area.
Meaning that it will be available to assist if there's a fire, that that's sort of a...
Yes, and with our, you know, our language with the Macomb County, with the chief association, there's no charge for reciprocity of equipment, none whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion supporting the resolutions, supporting the city of Richmond's regional assistance to firefighters, grant application for aerial.
Support. Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes.
We'll use Ron's, you got the original, Ron, you can sign it and then hand it to Jody, then I'll take it with me tonight.
I'll sign it right down for you, sir.
It's resolution number three.
Three. Letter H, advertise for senior coordinator. Basically just want authorization to, I believe we should have the language for last time we, we put it out for advertisement, to re-advertise for that position.
Go ahead, you didn't want to stay on?
I didn't know anything about this.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, I didn't see anything about this.
Well, you're gonna be taken elected position.
That is correct.
So we're...
There is nothing that says I couldn't bother here my time in the senior department, I don't believe.
I'd love to see you stay on, I think the seniors would want to see you stay on. Well, everybody was looking at me a second ago.
I didn't, I, I, at this point, I wasn't aware of that specific issue in terms of whether it would fall under what's called the incompatible public offices act and that's where the analysis takes place. I'd have to look into both positions and the details of them to be able to render an opinion on that. I'm not prepared to do so at this time. And what that act basically says, it has a standard for determining whether two public offices are incompatible with each other such that one individual is not permitted by law to hold both at the same time. So there is a statute that applies to this and I'll need to look into it, find out the details.
Is that, is senior coordinator considered a public office?
That's one of the questions.
It's just a job, isn't it?
Well, every, every public position is, you know, a public employee is a public, considered a public office under that act. So if you're employed by the public to do something, by a public entity to do something and then you're employed or appointed or elected to another position, you have to look at that act to make sure they're not in conflict.
We put it on the agenda.
I did. I'm basically taking safeguard so that position is not vacated and empty. So that we have somebody...
I would not allow that to happen.
Well, it might not be up to you, is what, what we're saying after he checks into it. That might not be your decision.
I'll make a motion to table the senior coordinator advertisement until the attorney has a chance to look into it to see if she can stay on holding both positions.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. And that's fine, but that still doesn't solve the problem if it, if it does take place where he says she can't hold it. Now we've just wasted time in getting somebody in here.
Well, if we'd had some information, maybe we'd have, but this is totally, I thought we...
It's just to, it's not to hire, it's not to hire, it's just to advertise. Not, not trying to clean house, she's trying to be an elected official. There was nothing on the ballot. I had no information in front of me on the ballot thing, but we made a decision.
You most certainly did, we all had emails on the ballot.
I did not have anything in my packet regarding it. This is just to advertise, nothing more, nothing less, that's all it is. Any other questions or discussion?
Steve, if that were to be the case, could she volunteer? Would, I mean, would that make a difference until we could get somebody else?
I'll have to look at that.
You can name it right here, okay.
Yeah, as soon as I render an opinion though, depending on how it turns out, something might need to be done fairly quickly. Cause nobody wants to be in violation of law, including yourself, I'm sure, so that's, that's, we'll just have to deal with the situation, but I do need to examine it. I'll look at it from that standpoint as well.
Okay, cause there's like, little over two weeks between the 20th and the next meeting.
Please.
There could be a vacancy for that period of time if, if there's a requirement to vacate the seat. I don't, I'm not coming to that conclusion, but if that is how the law reads, based on the information I find out, the seat could just be vacant as far as the senior coordinator is concerned. I assume that's the seat that would be chosen.
Mr. Clifford.
You might wanna look into the fact that if I win tomorrow, I currently sit on the board review with this, I currently sit on the board review, so you might wanna look at that too as far as the law. Cause I, I have to be replaced in December, that's when my term is up anyway.
Thank you. Yes, I will.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Aye. Motion passes. Public comment. Are any public comment at this time? Mr. Manchek? If you gotta move that, if you have to move that, Jeanette, would you assist him? Probably move it to the lot dance, it'll get you out of the sun there. Feel free to move it as far over if you need, cause I know that's pretty bad.
Thank you. Dan Manchek, 4200 County Line Lenox. Just wanted to make a couple points. Throughout this whole process, we've made every effort to resolve the issues that have come up. We've restricted our trucks from using 30 mile road from grass to our yard, even though legally we can use it. We proposed reducing the truck traffic on the west driveway during certain hours of the evening. We have pine trees ordered and ready to plant along the property line as a barrier. As soon as it is dry enough to do so, had we not gotten the rain last week, they would have already been planted. Regarding the old house on 30 mile road, it is scheduled to come down as soon as the Lenox Fire Department is done using it for their training. Our company is in compliance with the consent judgment and we have every intention of keeping it that way. With that, I'm asking you please grant us our request for a seven-year extension and I wanna thank you all for your time on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Mike Manchek, 37682, 30 mile road.
My name is Mike Manchek, 37682, 30 mile road. It is, well, Richmond Transport. I've been accused of having a family feud and that's the only reason that I'm doing this and it's not the reason I'm doing this. It's the real estate values and it comes down to enjoying my residential home and the peace and quiet of my residential home. The Richmond Transport has offered to buy my house, which I appreciate that, but my wife and I discussed it and it's not at our best interest right now to sell it. And I don't feel like I should have to move because a commercial company is next door to me in a residential area. What I want to propose is to eliminate the noise and dust and 30 mile road damage. They can keep their mechanical building and working on their trucks and their wash bay and everything, but what's really causing the noise is the parking lot. From 4 o'clock till early around 7, 7:30, there's constant trucks coming in. And every time somebody comes in, they make noise when they make the turn onto the driveway. It's just fingernails on the chalkboard. And it's pretty hard to get used to it. I tolerated it for a lot of years and now that I'm getting ready to retire, I'm going to be home a lot more and I just don't want that kind of noise in the neighborhood. Mr. Muller has made complaints about it also. And we came up with an idea that maybe the board can take into consideration. Because the trucks in the parking lot are the trouble, maybe we should move the parking lot. Just move the parking lot down about 1,000 feet, 1,200 feet down county line. There's really nobody you can bother there. The trees are a great sound barrier and it's on both sides. In the 2003 consent judgment, that piece of property was already given to them to use and they no longer can use it for stockpiling any kind of agri ed or top school or anything. So it is able to use that and they've been using it for probably 40 years already. So it is a good, a good place to have it. It's high and dry and very low cost to probably put in a parking lot for them because they have their own trucks and end loaders and graders and all that, so it'd be very low price to put a parking lot in. There was a couple glitches that was brought up about, oh, a quarter of it is owned by my sister-in-law, Pat Manchek. But that didn't really mean that that can't be overcome in some way or another. And also the mechanics don't have CDO licenses to drive on the road, but that can be overcome too by buying a couple of vehicles for transporting your drivers back and forth. If Lennox Township and Richmond Transport had a little cooperation there, I think it can be made to where we can resolve this. I think it's a good solution to the problem. And then that way in that area, the real estate values will stay up. This will probably eliminate, I would say, 85 to 90% of the noise that's all times of the day. The last few nights, it's been 2 o'clock in the morning, trucks driving about 150 feet away from me. And I don't really appreciate that too much, but the noise at between 4 and 7:30 is pretty, pretty bad. Mr. Muller and I, that's our plan to resolve this problem and I hope you take it into consideration. One last thought for everybody on the board though. Put yourself in my place. I know you all have nice houses. Would you want a trucking company 150 feet away from your back door? Thank you.
Might as well do it now, yes, sir. Remember watch the comment.
First of all, if I thought that solution, as easy as it sounds, was possible, I would do it tomorrow in a heartbeat. He sort of simplifies co-ownership of a piece of property, which he was part owner of not too long ago. It's not, it's not a practical solution. We've looked into it and it's not. One thing that I do want to touch on is he stressed the fact that trees are a good sound barrier. And we have a row of trees, a huge row of trees that are going to be going between our two property lines. The truck traffic that he's referring to, I've already proposed limiting the use of that driveway from certain time in the evening till the next day, but it sounded like that was totally not acceptable. I'm trying feverishly to be a good neighbor. I'm trying to be a good relative to my uncle who built his house there knowing that trucking company was there along with my uncle and my cousin's trucking company. And for years, he has no problem with it. But he got in a little pissing contest with my father and this is leverage. And I hope that you can all see through it. We are trying to be a good neighbor. We will do whatever it takes to keep peace and harmony that has been in the neighborhood for 40-plus years. This thing has gotten out of control and if I thought it was as easy as moving my trucks 1,000 yards down the road, I would do it in a heartbeat. It's been researched, it's not a practical viable solution at this time. I appreciate your time.
My house was built in 1979. That was before Richmond Transport was even thought about. I built my house in a bean field, an agricultural bean field. Lennox Township has let Richmond Transport be in Lennox Township as a commercial business, as a privilege. It was a privilege for them to do it. They have never cooperated. I asked them several times before I complained about anything before 2012. I asked Francis, could you stop the noise or quiet the noise down? Could you clean up your yard? And then that's when I had to cite them for blight. They were in contempt of the court judgment for years, probably 15 years. And I had to complain about it so they would clean it up so Lennox Township would make them clean it up. There's no cooperation here. If you give them another seven years and turn your back on me, you're not listening to the residential homeowner in the zoning that I'm in. They're in a residential zoning, a commercial business, a multimillion dollar business, taking advantage of Lennox Township. They pay no commercial taxes. They pay nothing towards the schools or anything. The only thing they pay is residential taxes on their house, Francis's house, which they pay taxes on $72,855. That's what they pay taxes on. They don't pay anything else beside that. On the same note, three of the owners here don't even live in Lennox Township. They live in St. Clair County. They come to Lennox Township every day to take advantage of Lennox Township.
Please, please save your comment.
Hey, I didn't bother you, okay?
I'll give you time, I'll give you time to comment.
But the thing is, there was no cooperation here and I'm afraid if you give them another nine years, there's not going to be any cooperation because once they get it, they're just going to do whatever they want. They're going to get their hands slapped and that's, that's all they're going to do. They're not going to abide by what Lennox Township is. They've proved it several times already that they don't listen to what Lennox Township says. They had to be made to clean up their yard. Five 18-wheelers full of junk, wheels, rat traps is what they were. And they had to be forced to clean up. They keep saying right now that they're abiding by law and they always abide by law. It's not true. 2012, it would still be that way if I didn't stand up and complain about it in 2012 and I had enough of it. In 2012, I finally had to stand up and make them clean it up. Mr. Joplin knows that. He worked on that for a long time, almost a year. And Lennox Township spent a lot of extra money making them clean it up. Now, I'm putting that to the board, okay? I, what I'm doing this for is my benefit when I go to sell my house. If I have a commercial company 150 feet away from me, I'm going to have to take at least a 10% hit on my house to sell it to anybody. Like I said, you put yourself in my place, your nice houses and everything. Put a, put a trucking company next to your house and see how much your value goes down. That's all I have to say.
If that's the case, I'll let you make one more point, then he also, I'm going to give everybody equal turn here and whoever else wants to comment.
I have an offer on the table that while I'm in business, if Mike Manchek so desires to sell his house, I will entertain fair market value for his house at that time. Now, that should take the whole worry away from his worry about his property value dropping. He has my guarantee, you can all take it to the bank. If he said tomorrow I'll buy us, you can sell or buy my house for fair market value, it will happen now. I guarantee that. And I don't care if it's eight years from now. If he decides he's going to sell it, I'd like to know how you determine your property is devalued when you've never put your property on the market for sale. In order to come up with that fact, you have to say, "I had it on the market for six months, a year, at this price and nobody will give me that." It's never happened. This is out of the blue, I know my property is devalued because of that rotten trucking company. It's not fact. But he has a guarantee and you can put it in writing. He has my offer for fair market value. I don't care when it is. If I'm in business there and he feels he's being shorted because of my trucking company, he will be bought out at fair market value. That's a guarantee not too many people have.
Thank you, sir. You would like to respond to that one?
Is that offer made to everybody in the community? Because I'm not throwing Mr. Muller under the bus here. If that's, you know, if Mr. Muller puts his house up and the guy next to it puts his house up and he can't sell it, is he going to buy it? If he puts that in writing, I think we can live with that. He couldn't make it tonight, he was still working. I'm just saying, everybody, I'm not even speaking for him, I'm speaking for myself.
Please direct all comments for...
Is it going to, is it going to pertain to everybody in the community? That's all I'm asking. I, I do appreciate it. That wasn't on the table before. If what was on the table, he was wanting to buy me out now and that was never on the table, that eight years from now fees, if my house won't sell, he'll buy it at fair market value. That was not on the table.
Thank you, sir.
Rhonda Perry, but I do live in Casco Township. First of all, my dad's been trucking on that corner since, what year? 64, 1964. So even though Richmond Transport started later, we have been trucking on that corner and Mike Manchek has lived there all his life. Okay, so it's not like he just built this house, we started a trucking company. Okay, that's not the case. And there is a family across the street from Mike that just sold their house. Beautiful home, just had no problem selling it. The Smolinski's, they just sold their house right across the street from Mike, no problem. So, that's a little...
Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to close off public comment. Close session.
Make a motion to go into closed session for purposes of discussing confidential attorney-client privileged communications from the township attorney for the purpose of discussing pending litigation.
At 5:05. At 5:05, thank you. Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Colts, can you roll call on that, please?
Boyd?
Aye.
Churchy?
Aye.
Adam Harker?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye. Closed session at 5:36 PM.
Make a motion that we go back into open session at 5:36 PM?
Support. A motion by clerk Keith, supported by trustee Boyd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Meeting in open session.
After extensive discussions and talks, I make a motion that no action on the Richmond Transport extension request be taken.
Support. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions, discussion? Ms. Colts, can you do roll call on that, please?
Boyd?
Aye.
Churchy?
Aye.
Adam Harker? Aye. Keith?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye. Motion passes. Make a motion to adjourn at 5:37. Support. Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by clerk Keith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. To adjourn.